Thank you. Dr. Newman, are there any additions and corrections to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Under consent, agenda personnel, ratification of personnel.
Thank you. Great job. Next up, superintendent's announcements and spotlights, Mrs. Radford.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Dr. Newman, other members of the board, good evening to you tonight, and also good evening to everyone that has joined us. I do have one spotlight that I would like to share with you on this evening, as you all come join us down front. We have the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, a group of students that Dr. Newman and I meet with once a month over at Osborne High School, and they span ninth through 12th grade. The purpose of the meeting during Eagle Block on that one meeting a month is to provide feedback to the superintendent and for him to share information with them, but I've asked him to, since we have a few of them with us here tonight, to talk a little bit about what kind of information we get when we're in there.
Good evening, board members. First, I want to start off just by thanking the students that were on the advisory committee. They're dedicated. Their passion for Osborne came out in every meeting. As we, you know, when we talk to adults, we say if you come to us with a problem, have a solution. And I can tell you that these young men and women had a solution for every problem that they were encountering at Osborne, from broken bathroom doors to having conversations on how we can welcome our new students into Osborne that come in. They had ideas for that. They wanted to talk about school spirit. They had ideas for that. We were able to use some of their ideas, and every one of their ideas was a huge success. And it just goes back to when we talked during my interview of making sure that we're listening to our kids. And the students of Osborne that were on that committee, we listened to them. And I want to say that because of them, we turned Osborne into a better place for all of our students. I think we can take something from those 18 or 19 students and start listening to the other 2,000 about what they need. But it was a great start. I enjoyed those meetings every month. Sometimes you look at your calendar, you're like, oh, man, I had this meeting. But I enjoyed those meetings. And I just, again, just want to thank them, and I'm so glad they are being able to be honored tonight in front of the board, and I'm looking forward to working with the returning members next year. And for the seniors, thank you for your efforts for your four years at Osborne.
Thank you. We also want to give a shout out to Mr. Larry Gilligan, who could not be here tonight. But Mr. Gilligan is always so gracious to allow us to use the Career Center to meet with the students and help us administratively to communicate with them and make sure that they're there every month like clockwork. So we certainly appreciate him. You know, it's interesting, the students asked if they could come to the school board meeting. They wanted to incorporate that into next year, maybe to attend, to see how things work here when we all meet together. And we just thought it was a great idea and wanted to showcase them to you tonight. So some of them were able to commit to being here tonight, and as I call your names, ladies and gentlemen, would you please come forward? First, we have a senior, Hamza Al-Jadi. Al-Jadi is here? Yes, come on down. Junior Audrey Doan. Senior Imranul Khan. Junior Hector Liva Sandoval. Junior Benjamin Lopez Delpino. Junior Luke Spall. Senior Leon Sanga. Is Kevin Regalado here? Kevin Regalado's here. All right. As Dr. Newman said, you know, the feedback that you provide to us every month is invaluable. And as he said, every time we get back to our general cabinet meeting, he shares a lot of the information with our staff to make sure that we take care of the things that you bring up and take note of the ideas that you share with us. So thank you all so much, and if we could take a picture together, that'd be great.
I don't know how many of you guys are really as cool as Luke, but let's try not to be and smile unlike the prom pictures that I saw. So Luke, you need to smile in this picture. Do you understand me? Thank you. Don't be a jerk.
Yes, right there. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. I have to get somebody to take it, because I'm... Everybody's coming forward to the church. All right, thank you. And we will see all of you next Tuesday.
What's next Tuesday?
Our regular meeting with them, our last one for the year. Okay, at this time, as we come to the end of a school year, this is always bittersweet, but our school board members would like to make a presentation tonight. As you know, we have school board student representatives that assist us every school board meeting. We've come accustomed to seeing them here, you know, and I've had the privilege of talking to each of them, not only at board meetings, but during the superintendent's student advisory meeting. And they both have told me how invaluable their time with the board has been, the information that they are able to gain, you know, in working with each of you. So tonight, the two of them are here, and I would like to present the certificate of achievement awarded to Hamza Al-Jadi for outstanding participation as a student representative to the school board for the City of Manassas for the 2018-19 school year, awarded this 28th day of May 2019, signed by Chairman Sanford S. Williams. And we have the same certificate for Ms. Audrey Doan.
Again, we just want to add how grateful we are for your input to the school board. Audrey, we look forward to working with you in the future as you continue on into your senior year. And Hamza, we're so proud of you that you're going on to further your education, and we have a small gift for you.
Congratulations. Thank you all for everything. This concludes our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. The next item on the agenda is board committee comments. For, actually, board committees' comments. Yeah, I'm right. Any committee comments? Looking to the left and to the right? No board committee comments. I want to make sure. I always forget citizen comments, but I'm not going to forget next... Because we're after this. All right. Next up, board member comments. We will start off with Ms. Doan.
Thank you. As the school year comes to a close, it becomes increasingly more difficult to say goodbye to our seniors. With 16 days left, we will cherish the years we spent with them in classes, in the jokes we share and the clubs that we were in together. Despite the massive change their absence will have on our school division, the rising seniors of this year are capable of fulfilling their legacy. I've never realized why graduation was such an emotional time for both my brothers, but as I approach the same time, it becomes all too real. In spite of the end of the academic year, the city still has various programs for the summer. A few are Osborne CTE Building at Hardham and the basketball camp, fire camp, and the summer school program. Today, Osborne is also hosting the Jazz Cafe, which was beautifully decorated in the Art Commons as I left the school. As our last regular school board meeting of the year, I'd like to express my appreciation for the hard work and dedication which allowed for this successful year. During the first board meeting which I attended, the representatives at the time were so exceptionally kind and inviting. They were truly role models for me as I entered this position. Throughout the various meetings we've had, I've been able to see the blatant passion for education which takes place in our city, and I'm grateful for the opportunity I've had to share and learn from each one of you. One of the most memorable moments for me was a quote by Mr. O'Hanlon, in which he stated, "We were asked, so we went," in reference to an activity at Mets. This clear and concise statement epitomizes the work done for our schools and the spectacular and unselfish citizens of Manassas. It's with a heavy heart that we close this school year and say goodbye to our seniors, but we're grateful for the pathway of opportunity which the city has provided for them, and for that, I'm thankful. Thank you.
Nicely done. Thank you. Next, Mr. Al-Jadi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I just want to say thank you for the gift and certificate in court, but mostly thank you for the experience allowing me to be on this student rep position. It's been a great honor, great fun, learned a lot. As Ms. Radford said, completely invaluable to me. So I won't miss this position. Whoever the new rep is, congrats. You will enjoy this position, much like I have, especially the superintendent committee, superintendent committee. It's great fun in those committees and the members here. In Osborne, yearbooks are on sale this week. For $65, you can buy them during lunch. I just got mine today. There they are. I just got them today, so no one signed it yet, but I would like the board to be the first to sign my yearbook. You guys have been a huge part of my high school memory. I will forever remember this moment. So I think it's right to let you guys be the first to sign my book this year. Thank you.
Nicely done as well. Thank you very much. Next, Mrs. Williams.
It would be an honor to sign your yearbook. I do want to just point out the Superintendent's Advisory Board, those students who are on that board. What an experience that you guys have. A lot of school systems probably don't do that throughout this nation, so it truly is an experience. And on that note, and as graduation is upon us, I'd like to talk about experiences for a moment. That's one thing we all do have in common, our different experiences. However, each of our experiences are very different. Some will continue their studies at a four-year university. Some of you will go straight to work. Some will take classes and work. Some will join the military. Some will just say, oh, my gosh, I have no idea what I want to do when I grow up. No matter what you choose to do, it will definitely be an experience. Each of you will encounter different types of people. You will undergo many different challenges. But the key is to learn from each experience you endure. Life is a journey, but it is your journey to create. Make the best of it. And I just want to say congratulations to all of our graduates. Is that two more weeks? So get out there and do great things. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to say congratulations to Osborne High School on their CAPPY Award last night at the Kennedy Center. The CAPPYS is a writing and awards program that trains high school, theater, and journalism students to be expert writers, critical thinkers, and leaders. Student critics vie to be published in local media outlets by attending productions at other schools and writing critical reviews. Last night's CAPPY was awarded for costumes, and these efforts were led by Osborne students Jordan Drake, Juliana Misas-Sagovia, and Charlotte Thomas. Congratulations to these students, Osborne Theater Director Stephen Harvey, and the entire cast of Beauty and the Beast. Osborne High School is also hosting a viewing of the documentary Heroine's Grip. The film features four families whose lives have been impacted and forever changed by addiction. And these stories from those currently using drugs, people in recovery, as well as perspectives from law enforcement, healthcare workers, judges, prosecutors, and others who deal with people in this crisis every day. Ultimately, the film gives hope for the user and for the families who've been impacted. If you want a better understanding of addiction and its consequences, please attend the viewing of this film on June 3rd, 7:00 PM, in the Osborne Auditorium. Also today, I was fortunate to attend a school assembly at Metz Middle School. Mr. Ralph Barrett, a Holocaust survivor, spoke with the students about his experience as a young child in hiding from the Nazis. This was in the Netherlands in the 1940s. I was intrigued with Mr. Barrett's story, the thoughtful questions asked by our students, and the meaningful responses that they received. Thank you to the English teacher, Mrs. Elizabeth Schoenberger, the Metz English Department, and Metz Administration for bringing this experience to our students. Lastly, I just want to say I'm so excited for graduation. I'm happy for all our students and the staff that are nearing the end of their school year. Keep up the good work. Remember your goals, and finish strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seberg. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, again, thank the student advisory group. It's wonderful of you to share your time and especially your thoughts and then to come up with solutions. That's outstanding. Mr. Al-Jadi, thank you for your service to the board and to all of us and for your valuable input at all our meetings. For all our students, please work hard, finish strong, and congratulations in advance to all our graduates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hanlon. Mr. DiMaria.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Al-Jadi, it's been a pleasure. You didn't make too much fun of me, so I appreciate that this year. Last year's group was a lot worse than you guys. Luke, that's why you weren't allowed to do this. Yeah, that was just been too much back and forth. To the entire advisory committee, thank you. Hopefully, you'll learn from what you experienced as much as the superintendent learned from you. Because, you know, you have to be in the building to know what's going on in the building, and we're not, he's not, he's in there a lot now, but not all the time like you guys are. So I appreciate all the work that you guys have done to that. Mr. Spall, senior, is wearing an Osborne Alumni T-shirt. This Saturday is our Osborne Alumni Banquet. I don't know who's going to attend. It's for the Osborne alumni. I don't think Lee's going to go, but I was kind of eyeing her there. The Osborne Alumni Association is the oldest alumni association in the Commonwealth. 106, 10 years, 10? 110 years old. Nobody else has that sort of thing. When you graduate from Osborne, you never leave Osborne. You're always an Eagle. You can always be a part of our Alumni Association. There's no dues. You can, you know, if you go to the banquet, you got to pay to go to the banquet. And then in October, we've got the reverse raffle that's at the fairgrounds. It's a great time, great fundraiser, a great bargain. What I'm trying to say is stay in touch with us, because the City of Manassas is special, and you are part of Osborne. And the other high schools around here, when you graduate, you never know where you're living, you know. Nobody knows what their districts are from year to year. You're always Manassas, and you always will be. So come back, visit us, continue to come to the games. Trust me, you can act like a fool at the games. I've been doing it for 40 years. So always come back, always visit, come to the events, and always be a part of Osborne. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
How many years ago did you graduate?
Forty.
Wow.
Seventy-nine to...
Wow, congratulations.
Nineteen.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah, forty. You know what? You know what it's not? It's not 41. Yeah, you are. She's number one.
And congratulations. On that note, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Forty years.
In the same place. You know, some people get to leave. Some of us don't.
That really is heritage, and as several people have talked this evening, congratulations to all of our graduates, especially our school board representative. It embarks on a new chapter of life. And to Mrs. Williams's point, whether you pursue post-secondary education, go into the military, begin a trade, the one thing that is most important that I hope is the skill we really taught all of our children and all of our graduates at Manassas is the desire for lifelong learning. Because to our graduates today, you've got at least 40 more years to work. And that'll be a lifetime, and the world will change many times over. So you've got to stay current and stay relative to that. Related to that, I had the opportunity last week to testify at the State Board of Education. They're considering several changes to the SOQs, funding formulas. Quite a few things. I really focused on local control and local autonomy. And my focus there is the size difference between school systems and the Commonwealth is over 100 times different. So something that works in a small rural southwest Virginia as a standard may or may not work in Fairfax County where the city of Richmond. And it was a great debate. Secretary Holton is now, former Secretary Holton is now on the State Board. She and I had a wonderful dialogue. I got the opportunity to go down and meet with her again, I think, next week, because she asked for examples of what local control would look like and how it would not cost money, and that's the problem. When you volunteer, you get extra assignments. But I do look forward to that, because I think that is the kind of change that the state can make that will actually help local boards be better. Local boards are one of the few organizations in the state who truly are looking out for all children. That's really all I've got to say, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And thank you for the work, again, with all you do with the BSBA and the State Board. We appreciate it. Vice Chairwoman Keather.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the students. I don't think you realize how much your voice means, and I just would encourage you to continue others to get as involved as possible, because it's your voice. That really helps us think about what's going on in Dr. Newman and the staff about any alterations, adjustments, or new things to try. It's just, it's so very important. So thank you, and thank you for being here. Also lifting the voices of students are our representatives. You two have been magnificent this year. Ms. Doan, I mean, the words that you speak just inspire me to try to speak better. It's always intimidating to go up after you, but thank you for your words, and I think it hit upon what many of us, you know, feel and try to say. You just do a better job than I do at it. Hamza, you know, your smile, you walk into these meetings, and it doesn't matter what kind of day I have. You've just been a shining light. Your words, your wisdom, what you bring to the table has been magnificent, and we just know you're going to do even greater things. So congratulations to you on your graduation, and we will miss you.
I just wanted to also quickly say Mrs. Robbins, Williams, hit something that's very close to my heart, and it is life is a journey. And I just wanted to say this board and this staff are magnificent. I have had to be a little bit more absent lately due to some family emergencies that we're dealing with. And the people that you have elected up here, as well as the staff that we are so blessed to have, and our superintendent have been nothing but supportive. I haven't been able to be at events, but these guys have been there, and you guys are just awesome, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Keifer. And I will be brief. My congratulations is going to be limited to the CAPPY awards. I was able to attend last night with my wife at the Kennedy Center, and it was a marvelous, marvelous sight to see kids all over the DMV, I should say, District of Columbia, Maryland, Virginia, the DMV, who act and participate in theater. They get to showcase their talents, and it was amazing. It was about three hours, but it went by quickly. And the best moment was when they put up on the screen the nominees for costumes. And I've been attending, you know, on and off for a while, and I've seen it, but I've never known I was going to be nominated for anything. But to see us with all the schools in the area, us to be nominated, and then to win, and to see Jordan, Juliana, and Charlotte run up to the stage and be so happy to win, representing us was a great accomplishment and achievement. Plus, we had a lot of students there, including the daughter of one of our members, who I saw, and are well behaved. This is a great event. So congratulations to them. It's really significant. And again, that's one of the many, many things that we do as a community, which is awesome. And even though you don't always hear that, and it's not always portrayed in the press or always talked about, we have a lot of great stuff going on. So congratulations to them and to our staff. Next on the agenda, which I will not forget this time, is citizens' comments. I have one person signed up for the OHS After Prom Committee. Is there anyone else signed up to speak? If not, may the representative of the OHS After Prom Committee please approach the lectern. And as you approach, I'll read our standard speech. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you've taken to be here. We treat citizen comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. And I will give the floor to you. May you all just please say your names and where you live.
Erica Washington, 9514 Sandy Court.
Karen Smith, 10319 Sarajevo Court.
Jackie Scott, 10140 Willow Lane.
Jill Spall, 10407 Spagans Court.
You are witnessing here the four lone parents that helped throw on an event for our Osborne High School juniors, seniors, and their guests to the 2019 After Prom. It took a countless amount of effort to be able to solicit volunteers, to help chaperone, to also get donations to be able to provide for the event for the kids. Just echoing the statements that have been made here today of Osborne and the City of Manassas being a community where we're growing a heritage. The inclusion, the how we do it with having the students be part of the voice that helps drive direction, making sure that we always individually lead by example by attending events, showing our support across the board to the different activities that kids do. And that is something that, as parents, we fight to do every day, and so to see it within our community leaders, it's very much appreciated. For the After Prom, it is the only event that we have that kids actually want to attend that teaches them the dangers of distracted driving. We've been able for the past couple of years with a lot of pleading to get a sponsorship in order to be able to have a distracted driving impairment at the event, so that way kids know that they can have fun. But Prom Night is a night that has a lot of good things that could happen, but a lot of poor choices could be made. It's important for us, as the only school within the area that provides an event such as this, to be able to give kids better options. You can't just tell them no. You have to provide an alternative. And while we can't do it for every event, such as graduation night, we do want to make sure that we can provide them a great opportunity to have fun with their colleagues in order to be able to enjoy the memory of prom with the host of activities that we're able to provide. And it's not just, you know, mom activities. It's, you know, having caricature artists, inflatable events where they're riding a wave, riding a bull, doing an obstacle course, or even just a moon bounce. Then we have, at the Freedom Center, we had the full use of their entire pool area, and we had well over 220 students there from 12 to 4:00 AM having fun. And to have kids readily smile while I'm holding a camera, where they can see me, see them, and not flinch is a true miracle. I don't know if you've taken pictures of your own kids after they hit the turning age of the teenage years, but it's an event that has happened for years past, but we can all relate to dwindling parent participation. So I hope that we can solicit your support in order to try to make this an event that doesn't wane away as we all have students that are graduating next year. We'd want for this to be a tradition that's kept on, not for the sake of tradition, but because we... Not for the sake of tradition, but because we know that it does keep our kids safe. It's a wonderful event to be able to involve parents, students, and local businesses and represents Manassas City Public Schools in a very positive light. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Ladies, thank you all very much for everything you do for our children. We, I'm going to speak for everybody. We understand how much work you put in for this and we understand of how difficult it is and how hard it is to herd cats. And we appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up, the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, move adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Is it modified? As modified, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Allbrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, seven-zero. The consent agenda is adopted. Next up, the discussion agenda. We will start with technology, FY 2019 update. Mr. Bobby Barrett.
Thank you, Chairman Williams, Vice Chairman Kiefer, members of the board. Privileged to stand here before you today and present an update on our technology. So in May of 2016, after many months of effort, I stood in this very spot and we collectively presented a comprehensive educational technology plan for Manassas City Public Schools. And that plan, past plans had focused primarily on equipment acquisition, getting the hardware, software, laying down the foundations for our infrastructure. And this last plan that we presented in 2016, it took those gains and began to build upon them to really start transforming the learning process within MCPS. And listed here, I literally took the highlight, highlighted goals from the slides from 2016. And I'm happy to report that every single one of those in some form or fashion has been achieved in these last three years. And so what I want to do is take a quick look at some of the achievements from this past year. For the area of instructional technologies led by Mr. Pedro Hernandez, our e-Backpack program. We're just finishing up the fifth year of this program at Osborne High School. Once again, all students in all the grades were issued devices. Significant changes took place between last summer and the school year. The device assistant desk, or as students know it as "DAD", was relocated into the library. Maintenance upgraded the facilities there, charging stations, all sorts of components. The librarians are now involved in helping inventory. And I'm happy to report it was a successful year of utilization. Those devices were used in SOL testing just in the last couple of weeks. Informative assessments, logging into Google, the Google platform, Schoology, which is our learning management system. And so once again, that program has been a success. We'll be keeping the same devices going into, over the summer, for the rising freshmen next year. This year was the first year for our learning management system, Schoology, to be rolled out all the way down to grade five. And so, and then we had some pilot cases within the K-four environment. And Mr. Hernandez provided some statistics. You can see from September to March how in-use that is. One of the neat things about Schoology is it's an all-encompassing platform. We're starting to leverage our digital textbooks are being included there. It's kind of like Facebook in terms of its orientation and the way it's used. A lot of communication from staff and students and student-to-student and all sorts of things are able to take place in there. And so it's been a tremendous usage and great tool. That's expanding once again. And so into next year, they will roll that out to our K-four students for the next school year. In terms of our technology leadership and our professional learning areas, every single school had a school-based technology committee, a building-based committee that met monthly, whether it be in-person or virtually using tools such as Schoology to have comments going back and forth. My team has started to use that platform as well. You can have a dialogue, maintain the dialogues. People come and go and you can see the history there of those types of things that are saved there. So all the schools had that each and every month. We continued our technology standards for instructional personnel or the T-SIPS, while the state no longer mandates that as a requirement. Manassas City Public Schools has kept that in and we ensure that all the instructional staff members have the, those set of skills that are needed. And then our instructional technology training specialists, our ITTSs, they're the ones that actually do the hands-on training for our staff. They provided what we call technology training days, weekly in their schools for our staff members. We've had collective sessions as well. And so there's been a lot of professional learning, professional development focused on using technology and focusing on implementing and integrating is probably a better word, that technology into our classrooms and really into the educational environment. And then our digital citizenship curriculum continued one more, another year with internet safety at the K-eight level. We use Common Sense Media, a platform put on by them. Mr. Hernandez will be launching through his team a curriculum for the high school next year using the, leveraging the Schoology platform. The digital literacy program was also, once again, used at the K-eight level that helps train our students on how to utilize the technology, how to be aware of certain things. And you can see he provided stats here, more than ninety-seven thousand total logins just this school year alone at the K-eight level. And then over the summer, forty-five-hundred-plus students will continue to have access all summer long to learning.com to continue learning the digital literacy and citizenship skills and coding. So a lot's been going on in our instructional environment. In terms of our information technology environment, we've done a lot of technology planning and implementation. Last summer, we replaced and actually supplemented our entire copier fleet. Got new devices, beefed those up at our schools. Along with that, and I'll skip down to the bottom there. Implement, we, the print management was part of this as well. We reduced our printer, printing footprint by two-thirds devices. Still getting the same efficiency, but with less devices, less overall operating expense, recurring monthly, you know, usage and costs for toner and that type of stuff. We were able to digitize our acceptable use agreements this year. Rather than have a paper-based system, those rolled out through our talent ed system through cooperation with human resources. We continued on with our software approval process. We maintain a software, approved software database on our Intranet that all staff members have access to. And there's well over three-hundred applications that have been reviewed and approved and are posted there. The applicable grade levels that it suits, as well as their focus areas. And then our formal project assessments where we really take a look at what these vendors are doing with our student data, with our employee data. How do we protect that? How do we integrate that with our existing systems? We've done several of those assessments this year as well. As has been in years past and probably more so this year, security has taken, both physical and cybersecurity has taken center spotlight in our environment. Mr. Sansone, I forgot to introduce, recognize Mr. Robert Sansone, our coordinator of information technology is here. He and I worked with a company to perform an audit of our Google infrastructure, Google domain. They researched and looked at every single setting from what we call the administrative console and provided us a comprehensive, I believe it's about eighty-page report on our settings, best practices, what we could do to make our students and our staff safer in that digital environment. In preparation for that too, we worked with the principals and we made a few changes at the K-six level, determining that Gmail was, would probably be better off, turned off for those students. And we did execute that about two months ago. And we looked at all the other applications that were on that maybe exposed us a little bit more than we wanted to be and made the appropriate changes at that level as well. We added email footers. You may have seen them on your emails, any incoming emails now from an external source have a bright red footer at the bottom that has helped us. We've been the target of spam and scams and spoofing quite a bit this year. This helps us be able to quickly visually look at, try to authenticate who the sender is. We've started upgrading our Raptor visitor management systems at our schools. We've completed the Baldwin's last month. And so those, those systems are up to date. Plans are for the rest of those systems to be done in the next couple of months, the backend infrastructure for that. Working along with our risk, risk assessment team, we utilized our technology, put our money where our mouth is, and founded a nifty way to utilize our internet-based phones at central office. And we created a paging system out of that. And it's one thing we lacked because it's a leased facility. And so now we have the ability to do an all-call to target certain segments, emergency, that type of thing. So that's up and running. In next year's budget, FTE was approved for an information, information security engineer. We're currently advertising for that. While Mr. Sansone, myself, Mr. Buckley, and some of my team have some expertise, we're certainly not subject matter experts in security. And so it is time to bring somebody on who could really focus and really look at all of our applications, everything we're doing from a security-centric viewpoint and kind of guide us how we can better secure things. And one of our most, more exciting projects we've been working on is we've completed some strategic planning to implement a next-generation firewall for the city schools. It may not mean a lot to you, but it is a tremendous upgrade for us. It gives us much greater visibility into the traffic that's going in and out of our networks. Things that we can't see today, we'll be able to see tomorrow with this system. And all that will be coming. Mr. Hawkins, as good as a savings, over a hundred thousand dollars a year. Once we get all this in, we'll be able to reduce a couple of other systems and collapse them into this one single system. So that will be coming on board in the next few months. Some of the major highlights, and I'll just briefly go through them that we did last, at the end of last summer, right before school started, we took our entire iPad inventory, re-imageed those, if you will, kind of wiped them clean, put them all back in new groupings, pushed out applications. I know that's just one line there, but that is hours and hours and hours of labor on our more than fifteen-hundred iPads in our inventory. So that has helped. We completed our migration to Windows 10. We're at ninety-nine, I think, point eight percent migrated to Windows 10, excluding some of the older tablet computers at the high school which are not able to be brought up to that, to that level, but they will be paging out quickly. This time last year, I reported we had introduced one in-house broadcast system at one of our schools. We followed that up by the end of last summer and then subsequently Osborne a few months ago. All, all nine of our schools now have an IP-based in-house broadcast system where they do morning, afternoon announcements, comes over the computer. We no longer need the antiquated TV screens. In fact, maintenance has been taking a lot of those out of our buildings. The coaxial cable that runs through the ceiling is decades old. It was failing in certain segments of our, of the buildings. And so that, that system is in. We brought on a new internet service provider, put in a ten-gigabit circuit. Right now, we have what we call traffic shaped down to one gig. But with just the flip of a switch, they can bump our internet speed up within a day's notice. And so it's positioned us well for the future going forward. We did a lot of work in our data center, beefed up our core network. Again, a security, a security-focused area. We replaced our virtualized environment. Virtualization is one area where we see a lot of cost savings in cooling and power. We consolidate physical servers into virtual ones. So we did that. We put auditorium projector systems in Mayfield, Metz, and most recently Osborne, and that will be used for the movie night coming up. And we are on tap to install the same type of system in Jenny Dean's auditorium this summer. And so they will be able to have that use. And two of the things I really want to highlight is, are the projectors and our computer refresh. Projectors have been near and dear to my heart probably because I kind of took this one on and owned it since I got here. I think when I walked into my office the first day, I think there were a stack of about a dozen projectors in my office that needed to be installed. And so it's taken many phases over several years to get to where we are. By the end of this summer with Dean and Mayfield and Round, we will have replaced a hundred-and-sixty projectors, more than a hundred-and-sixty just in this school year alone, which will bring us to a hundred percent completion through, up through Metz. The only one that remains will be Osborne. Osborne is about forty-five percent complete. And so that will be our focus, our focus next. And then our computer refresh and reshuffle project. So five years ago, we implemented what we call our computer replacement cycle. We put in a six-year lifecycle limit. At the six-year of use, we retire our computers. It's no longer cost-effective to maintain them. It's cheaper to get newer products and replace them. And, and over the years, we've been augmenting those replacements with additions, additional computers. And so for the past six months, our team has been working with our school-based folks, our principals on identifying a new course of action. And so I'm excited to say that after this summer, we're going to be reshuffling a lot of the inventory throughout our schools in our mobile carts. And when the students come back in August, we will be one-to-one, first grade through twelfth. Will be a one-to-one school division. At the pre-K and kindergarten levels, by design, we will be two-to-one. It's not because we don't have the devices, but it's instructions determine that it's more appropriate to give them a different device, smaller devices, iPads and smaller age appropriate computing devices. So I think this is a milestone in Manassas City Public Schools' timeline that we are now going to be a one-to-one district all the way down through the elementary level. I just wanted to hit, some of these I've already hit on, but just in the last five years of how far we've really come. And it's not by anything I've done. It's all my team, Mr. Hernandez's team, my fellow directors and their departments and their leadership. First and foremost, we are, we have organization in technology planning that really was non-existent prior to that. We have a division-level technology advisory board we call TAB that meets periodically at central office. We have building-based technology committees at every school that are led by our instructional technology training specialists and our principals. We are now integrated with other division goals, other strategic plans, and I'll share with you in just a moment. Other departmental goals are now built into what we do and how we budget and how we forecast. And so there's a lot of planning from the top on down that really helps guide our decisions. We've introduced Google Domain, Schoology Learning Management System, platforms that, Google was here, but it really wasn't utilized as it could have been. And now we have, every single student has a Google account. We have cloud-based services that are available to students. Our digital portfolios are stored there now at the student level. Schoology is going to take it one step farther. You think of Google, the Google Drive, the Google environment to be the garage of Schoology, if you will. That's where all the documents, all the files will be housed. Schoology will now be the front end and we'll be able to leverage those even, even farther. We didn't have that before. We didn't have a learning management system. We've seen an explosion in the number of online textbooks and digital resources. We just finished working with curriculum instruction in adopting a math curriculum. It's predominantly all web-based, all cloud-based. Working with Ms. Batista and for pre-K, we finished up social studies and health not all that long ago. Constantly doing reviews and project assessments on new products, new cloud-based products that we can integrate and give our students access to. There's been a real focus on infusing technology right into the learning model. We're seeing that with our, with our devices that are in the hands of our students. The projection models, projection systems that are in every classroom now. Every single classroom has something. Every conference room has something. And so those are really, really being used. Our blended learning models, the better lessons of the world, our professional development, our building-based focused training sessions have really taken that and pushed it right down into the student's education. down into the student's education. I've, I've talked about the instructional devices. Every student has access today to a device. Every student will have, will be assigned one come August. Mayfield, Baldwin Intermediate, and Metz students will pick theirs up in homeroom in the first period, and however the, the buildings do their schedule, they'll pick it and they'll carry that device with them all day long and return it at the end of the day into the charging station. It'll be their device. They have, they have access to these technologies. I'm happy to report that as part of this reshuffle process, we're even going to be able to give every instructional assistant their own computer, something they don't have today. There's been an explosion, and I think the board for the, the funding to be able to do that and to work smarter with, with our, with our dollars and, and the way we distribute things. I talked about the centralized approach to printing strategies. A year and a half ago, we had over 600 printers in 10 buildings. Today, we have about 175. It's more than two-thirds reduced, and we're still, we're still have the same output, still meeting the demands. We've worked smarter. Projectors, and I've, I've talked about, this, this has been at least a three-phase approach. When I got here, there were about 150 classrooms that had no projection capability at, at all. So our first order of business was getting them something. The second order of business, because we kept getting written up every quarter for a quarterly safety inspection, was to get the ones on the carts in the ceilings and get those cords off them. And this third phase we've been working on is to standardize. We worked, went to the principals a couple of years ago, laid out the options, laid out the costs. They determined this is the standard we want to go to, and that's what we've been working And hopefully, within the next 18 months or so, we will be 100% complete at this new interactive standard. The network infrastructure, this is really my bailiwick. The main services, that's not the, not the sexy things, like the devices in the hands. You don't see the network, but it's the foundation, it's the road. If it doesn't, if it doesn't operate efficiently, nothing on top of it works. I think you, we had issues here on the network. We have a state-of-the-art world, I'd say world-class wired and wireless network. I believe when I got here, we only, we had less than 100 wireless access points. Now I have over 600. Getting ready to put in 120, 140 more in the next couple of months. We have a database administrator who is non-stop taking our Power School information, our student and staff rosters, and we're integrating that into other cloud platforms, other systems, and making all of these disparate systems talk to one another. We didn't have that position, didn't exist five years ago. Security, it's what's been leading us. Couple of summers ago, we, we had a third party come in and do an entire audit and give us a roadmap on how to proceed. This next-generation firewall that we're talking about coming on soon, it's going to take us leaps and bounds from where we are today, let alone where we were five years ago. The IT department, and I could speak to the IT department, has been completely realigned in the last five years. We did not have a ticketing system. We now, for a few years now, we have an IT support ticketing system where everything comes through. We have a comprehensive inventory management system. That was one problem area that Dr. McGort had talked to me about, is keeping track of the inventory. All of our hardware, all of our devices are managed in there. Everything's got a barcode that we keep track of. The accountability level has, has gone up immensely, and we've, we've really taken off working with our maintenance counterparts. I can't, I don't even remember how many cameras now, and they're all, they all work off the network, are in our schools protecting our, our facilities. Door access, our, our badge readers are now on, on wired and wireless networks, these building-based automation. At Metz, we just lit up a solar picnic table a couple of weeks ago. It's at the back of Metz. That runs off of, over our network. I just want to thank all my counterparts here, Mr. Sansone, Mr. Hernandez, who's not here, just to try to quickly paint a picture of how far Manassas Public Schools' technology has come, and I'm thankful for their, for their support. And in saying all that, we've been working throughout this school year, talking about our educational technology plan. I presented in, again, in May of 2016, the FY 2017-2018 Technology Plan. I stood before you last year, and we made the recommendation, TAB made the recommendation, that we continue that one more year because Virginia Department of Education was finalizing a rework of the state technology plan, and so we continued that. And so they, they published that out late in 2018, I believe it was December, November, December of last year, and they made some significant changes. Local school boards are no longer required to maintain a separate technology plan. There's no requirement anymore that we do this. But TAB felt that it'd be in our best interest if we do maintain one that works in concert with some of our other strategic plans. And so this Broad Tech Plan is, is much shorter. I think the last one was about 90 pages. This one's about 10. Just very basic and goes over a few goals, but it really hones in and it works in conjunction with these, these other, the other items that I have listed up here. And we, we, we came together to develop three overarching goals: instructional environment, professional learning and leadership, and the infrastructure. And we worked in small groups. We utilized surveys. Every, every school utilized their building-based technology committee to provide feedback. We surveyed the superintendent's student advisory, solicited feedback from them, and we've, we've developed this document. And on all the planning tools that we use, again, technology advisory board, building-based committees, all that feedback comes through surveys. We do an annual survey every fall that gives us feedback on, on how, how we're doing in terms of customer service, how are the devices meeting the needs, what else, what else does the staff feel would be appropriate for an instruction, for administration, operation. We work with Ms. Keegan on obtaining professional development reports, where the big focus areas are of, of professional learning and where we can help from a technology perspective. We use our inventory management system to see where we at, where, excuse me, where we're at in terms of our inventory, and of course, we work with our partners and keep up with the industry on the latest and greatest trends. And so tonight, I, I present, and it's not a separate presentation, it's attached in Board Docs here, our FY 2020 to 2023 Educational Technology Plan. Not necessarily looking for approval, action on it, but just wanted to present it. And so I thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Barrett. Any questions, comments?
Two short questions.
Ms. Seberg.
Solar picnic table, what does that power?
So it's a standalone, it was part of the Energy Performance Contract. It was included in that, and it, it powers itself, and so it's got, charging ports and things like that, but more importantly, it has a display inside the school, has a display inside the school that, that shows the kilowatt-hours that are being produced and to communicate to the students.
Okay.
I'll have that translated.
So it provides power?
Provides power.
And has the technology department considered internships for students?
We have in the past. We haven't most recently, but if there would be interest, we'd, certainly.
Just wondering, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maria?
Oh, I think he covered it all. I got one joke, but it's inappropriate, so I'm not going to tell him. I'm going to make fun of him.
Moving on to the floor. Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah, I do have a couple. You mentioned 2,880 parental visits. My back-of-the-envelope thinking is that's like 60, 70% of the parents looking at the student population. Do you think there's anything we need to do? We'll never get to 100%, but are we getting enough student population and who the parents are coming in, talking about the first things?
I think we've got some work to do. Mr. Hernandez works with his team to have parent education nights on how to utilize the technology, how to support their students. I think continuing that will help increase that. I think as more, more instruction and more of what the students are, are doing in there, that will drive the parent portal portion, if you will, to get that interaction in there. I believe those numbers will go up.
And I follow a lot of this stuff. So like today, we talk about the changing world. Amazon announced fundamental changes to their business model today. So here, this big company, what we thought was coming to Arlington is not what's coming to Arlington. So how they do e-commerce is radically changing. I really hearken when you talk about information security engineering and hiring one next year. One of the largest cybercrimes going on right now are governmental entities being held hostage, and we hear, we hear about one or two of cities, counties who say, no, I'm not going to do that, and they go without their data for months on end. We're talking student records and everything we're talking about, so that really is important for us to understand what that is, and I didn't hear you talk about it, but I'm assuming we've got some kind of very robust recovery plan.
We do. Sustained recovery, business continuity.
Which shouldn't be talked about in the open.
But what you're talking about is what keeps me up at night, as I see some of my counterparts around the areas, yeah, dealing with this.
Any other comments?
Okay. And I'll briefly say thank you very much to you, Mr. Sansone, Mr. Hernandez, and your entire group for the work you've done during the presentation at work, and one of the things I looked at today was there were billions of dollars lost to small businesses alone because of cybersecurity crimes, not to mention what Mr. Albrecht mentioned about folks breaking into systems and holding information hostage. So what you're doing is very, very important, and oftentimes not appreciated until some crisis happens, but thank you for keeping us ahead of that by being proactive. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to the action agenda, new business, student representatives for the 2019-2020 school year.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas appoint Audrey Doan and Abigail Saputro as the student representatives for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Seberg, second by Mr. O'Hanlon, that the school board of the city of Manassas appoint Audrey Doan and Abigail Saputro as the student representatives for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to mention that through this process, we had eight applicants, and we interviewed each applicant. The students that interviewed that aren't appointed will be serving on the student, Superintendent Student Advisory.
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments?
I, I do. I just want everybody to know the process of doing this is pretty intense, and I want to thank Suzanne for a lot of the work, and she really has put this together and really have kind of improved upon it greatly, and I really appreciate, appreciate your work. And I, I also want to thank all the candidates who have applied because every single one of them were fantastic candidates, and the quality of students we have here is amazing, and we all should be proud.
Thank you. I thank you to all the applicants and to the two folks that we have nominated, and I know folks don't like to hear us pat ourselves in the back, so to speak, but I do have to say Ms. Seberg has done a phenomenal job. She sets up a rubric for folks to go into the classrooms, us to talk to students, encourage them to apply, and then also to Ms. Williams for the two of them sitting down and going through the interviews and taking countless hours to make sure we get it right. So it's not part of the job description, it's something that we do that's different, but I appreciate your time and your effort in that, Ms. Seberg and Ms. Williams especially, and also to the students who applied. The ones who aren't selected will be in the student advisory council, as you saw, the great folks here earlier, and they make great contributions to our school system, so thank you all, the ones who are here, and the ones who will be here next year. So there's a motion on the floor from Ms. Seberg that we appoint, second by Mr. O'Hanlon, Abigail Saputro and Audrey Doan as student reps for the 2019-2020 school year. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, 7-0. Congratulations to Ms. Saputro and...
Can we have them stand?
Yes. Well, Ms. Doan, if you can stand if you like. Ms. Saputro?
Please stand.
Next item on the agenda, student achievement, K-12 mathematics resource adoption. Dr. Saunders.
Good evening. So I'm here this evening to put forward an action for the K-12 mathematics resource adoption. At the last board meeting, Dr. Cramp and Mr. Singletary presented the information to you, and, and as you heard Bobby talk for, Mr. Barrett talk for a few minutes, we really couldn't do our work without our technology department, and it's been a great opportunity to work with each one of them. They help us do the great things for kids that happen every single day, so they are simply a foundation for that, so I have to do a shout-out there. If there aren't any questions, I'm here to present that for action.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the proposed K-12 mathematics resources for the amounts of $596,930.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Hanlon, second by Ms. Seberg, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the proposed K-12 mathematics resources for the amount of $596,930. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, for those not here, we did discuss this. We ensured that there was that amount in the pre-approved budget and everything, and everything seems to be good. The material's been well-reviewed.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, 7-0. The mathematics resource adoption is approved. Thank you, Dr. Saunders. The final item on the agenda, finance and operations, FY 2019-2020 student fees and charges. Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. As we presented at the last school board meeting, we don't have any changes in the student fees. The only fee change that we had was in the cost of an adult lunch, went up by 10 cent from the previous year, and that was, that was a change that was dictated to us by the federal government as not to subsidize adult lunches. So there are no changes in any of the building rental fees, any of the other fees for any of the students whatsoever from the prior year. If you have any questions, concerns?
Thank you, sir. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the 2019-2020 student fees and charges, building use fees, food service fees and charges, and fee waiver guidelines as presented.
A motion by Mr. O'Hanlon, second by Ms. DiMaria, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the 2019-2020 student fees and charges, building use fees, food service fees and charges, and fee waiver guidelines as presented. Any discussion?
What Mr. O'Hanlon said about the math thing goes with this thing. We are passing this, we've been through this, we've looked over this, and so this is just a formality. We've already gone through all this.
Sir, I appreciate that. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, 7-0. The motion is approved. And before we adjourn, Dr. Newman asked to make a comment.
Yes, for the first time.
Yeah, and I know, I don't know what to expect.
Don't get used to it.
I'm not going to get used to it, but I, I've sat through a lot of meetings, and usually when we have superintendent spotlights, and when it's over, they all run out the door. And I, I just want to brag on my group and for staying for the entire meeting, and I just want you to know that was really appreciated by myself, and I'm sure is appreciated by the board. So thank you for that, and also, we have two middle-school championship teams. The baseball team won their game today, and the soccer team is also, the girls' soccer team won the middle-school championship, and we had a softball team that was in the championship game. They just did not come out on top today, but the future's bright for, for Osborne Sports. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that, please.
If you all choose, adjournment is next on my agenda.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ms. DiMaria, second by Ms. Keever, that the school board meeting adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, we are adjourned.